Welcome everyone here this evening here for the Cadillac Planning Commission meeting here at 7 o'clock here Monday, July 25th, 2016. Having done that, I've already announced phones, perfect. If everyone could please join me for the pledge and we'll keep moving.
Whoa.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That's probably a good thing. Okay. Start with roll call please, Mr. Wallace.
Filkins.
Here.
Champlin.
Here.
Van Luntie. Smith. Peterson.
Here.
Schickto.
Here.
Gregg.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Putvin.
Here.
We have plenty. Okay. Hopefully everyone had a chance here for the June 27th meeting minute. I didn't, nothing jumped out at myself, but...
I'll make a motion too, please.
Motion by Ms. Filkins, seconded by Mr. Fent.
Okay. Gregg.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Champlin.
Yes.
Van Luntie. Fent.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Filkins.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes. Thank you. All I now need is just an approval of tonight's agenda here for July 25th, 2016. No changes, correct, Mr. Wallace?
That's correct.
Okay.
I move we accept the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Schickto, seconded.
Sure.
Mr. Champlin. Okay. Fent.
Yes.
Filkins.
Yes.
Champlin.
Yes.
Schickto.
Yes.
Smith. Peterson.
Yes.
Van Luntie. Gregg.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes. Super.
Under Old Business, we just have two items, but item A under Old Business is just an update on the country acres fence construction. Mr. Wallace, everybody's got a little thing in front of them pertaining to it as well.
Yes, the representative from Sun Communities came in and spoke with Mike Coy and myself. They brought in samples of the slat material that they were proposing to use. Mike and I thought it was appropriate for what they were trying to achieve. I don't know if you're familiar with the slats and the fencing over by the MDEQ building, but it seems like it's the same identical product that they're using over there, which we probably put in as part of our project at that building. And they are going to get rid of all the barbs, they're going to reconfigure the tops and make them so that they have the typical knuckles on the top and not the sharp barbs. So, we thought what they were doing was fine and so we okayed it.
Okay. So this is just for basically our information, right?
Right, right.
This is closed? Pardon, would this be closed then? They'll communicate back to you when it's done though, right?
Oh yeah, correct.
And is there a timeframe on, put on that?
No, but we can, if we don't see something happen in the next week or two, we'll probably get back in touch with them and make sure that it's done. I'm sure they're anxious now that they have committed to doing something, that they just get on with it, so.
Great.
We'll follow up on that.
And I like the idea better that those barbs are removed. That I liked, so, yeah. Okay. Alrighty. Where am I? Oh yeah, further discussion on change of meeting times, having read that. I think for the most part, all of us were on board, but Mr. Gregg and Champlin weren't here during that discussion, so I didn't want to exclude you guys. And then I think I've got stuff in my packet that you're both okay with it?
Yeah, there's gonna be times where I'm not gonna be able to do it.
Right. Okay. Understood.
Why are we doing it?
Just, I guess just to get us in and out quicker?
Well, and actually, I was the one that brought it forward and from a timing perspective, some time ago, the city council went to a 6 o'clock meeting because it seemed to work better, you know, when the staff is here, it's a pretty long day for them, so it hasn't worked nicely. And so that's why I brought the suggestion forward, because otherwise you get home, you all settled in, and then you gotta come back out for a 7 o'clock meeting, so. So that's the only reason.
You might have some meetings that might not have a full complement. The only thing you're gonna run into.
Right, 'cause I mean, right Randy could run into stuff.
John's got a little bit of the same problem I got.
Right. I think I don't get quite as dirty as Randy, so I don't have to always, whatever, but...
It just might make it harder for some of the public to get here?
Not sure.
Being out of work and...
Well, council, they still get here.
They do.
I guess.
Doesn't make any difference.
So I mean, so it, I guess, question, is it something we can try and if we find it's got too many hiccups, we can always return, right? Back to 7?
I don't see why not.
I don't see why not. The only other thing I would have to just check with is make sure if council also has to confirm the meeting change, since it changes the whole set of routine meetings for all the boards, you know. It might be that they don't need to approve that, but I just want to check with Marcus or the attorney, make sure that council doesn't need to approve that change of time as well.
Okay.
But I think you're free to make a motion to make that change, given that, you know, whatever the process is to complete the change and change all the notices on the official city website and so forth.
Having said that, somebody wanna make a motion about our change of hours?
I'll make a motion to change our starting time from a 7:00 PM to a 6:00 PM.
Seconded by anyone?
I'll second it.
Mr. Fent, seconded. If we could maybe even, right, give some reminders, 'cause we've been on 7 o'clock like forever.
Okay.
I'd hate to get here at 7:00. Kevin would have to run it. All right.
Yeah, I'd hate to get here at 7:00.
We'll put big red li, big red letters on the next packet that goes out.
Just till we can get used to it, that's all. Roll please.
Okay.
What time do you close, Scott?
5:30.
Schickto.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Smith. Filkins.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Van Luntie. Champlin.
Yes.
Gregg.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes.
New business this evening. We have to, we have a review of an amended site plan here for J&amp;H Oil Company. Having read that, gonna turn this over to Mr. Wallace.
Yes, the owner of the J&amp;H Convenience Store, of course, their efforts, the last time we met was to solidify an agreement with the Subway franchise to locate in there. Apparently that has fallen through and they've negotiated another deal with a Tim Hortons. The Tim Hortons franchise felt the need to have a drive-through facility. So essentially what they've done is they've taken a few, the parking spaces that were on the south side of the building, moved them to the rear of the building, and installed a drive-through lane on the south side of the building. It has queuing for eight vehicles, which is kind of a standard number of queuing for, you know, an average type drive-through use. You know, if it was a real high volume, it probably wouldn't be very workable, but if it's, if it's low to medium volume, I think the eight queuing is consistent with what I see in many zoning ordinances and the ITE journals, so I think that's appropriate. The fire department has reviewed it, they are willing to accept it. They raised one issue, if you look in the letter, they had proposed perhaps bringing the, the entry, instead of bringing the cars in through the throat of the driveway and then turn left into the queuing lane. They were recommending that the cars enter directly from the primary service drive into the queuing lane, so that there wouldn't be that need to negotiate exiting traffic. They could come right down the service lane and ride in. For whatever reason, that was looked at and they wanted to go with the option that they have in front of you. Fire department felt the other way was better, but they're willing to accept, accept this version, but I, I didn't want to not bring that topic up so that you were aware that there was one other option that was being looked at in terms of what would work better in terms of conflict points for the, for the drive-through. And it's possible they are prepared to address why the option that they've chosen, so. Myself, I don't have, I don't see a real problem, while there is that one added conflict point, I don't think the traffic out of there will be so constant that it'll be a real big issue. And of course, you can read the fire department's concern as he's expressed. So, I, I'm okay with you using your own discretion to approve as presented, or if you wanna make changes, I would say that's up to, up to the board. But I think in terms of the amount of queuing spaces and the radiuses and the 20 feet clearance distance that the fire department needed to get fire trucks through that west service drive, I think it's satisfactory to be approved.
Okay.
It would also have to go on to the city council as well. As you know, all site plans and amended amendments to site plans have to go through both bodies as part of the PUD process.
So ours will just be a recommendation to council?
Right.
So I guess at this stage, if you're okay, I'd like them to explain to us, and I'm sure this isn't the first time they've put in the drive-through.
Right.
They must have a reasoning.
And this, and this isn't a public hearing?
Right.
Because it's just part of the site plan approval process?
But still have them write a name and address on the note.
Right.
They don't have to say it, or you can speak your name and write your other private stuff, please.
Okay, I'm Joe Grouse-Wolsky, I'm with Omega Architects, architect for the project. And since we've switched over to Tim Hortons, Tim Hortons is a requirement for a drive-up window. If you're gonna take the franchise, you have to have a drive-up window, and if you've seen them around, you won't see any without drive-up windows. The other thing is, we've had an experience with, in this type of deal, if we have to bring the drive-up behind the building, that in itself is kinda confusing. It's confusing for people to figure out how to get around, you know, because if they come in the main entrance off from M-55, that's an only driveway, then they gotta figure out how to get to the drive-up window, which they can't see from that side of the, of the project either. The owner wanted to put the drive-up, so it's very visible, so if you do come in the access drive that's farther down, and you come in that way, you'll see it's right there. Their experience is typically that they've got, you know, we talked about queuing eight cars, but it's typical that they queue five or six, and by 11 o'clock in the morning, their queuing is almost done for the day. They don't have that much traffic past 11 o'clock in the morning to their, to their drive-up window. Two, three cars maybe after that. So we don't see that as being a problem. And the discharge out of the window, the drive-up window, and them getting and leaving the site is the exact same as if they were to come all the way around the backside of the building too. We did work with the fire department and we got the 20-foot clear on the backside that they wanted there. And Omega has, we have another building that's this exact same, you know, clockwise type turn into the, we did a Big B restaurant, and then we're basically taking off from that one and have designed a second one, same thing, with the, with the counterclockwise. Most of them, like a McDonald's or something like that, you're coming the other direction. You know, the driver is on the inside curb side. But it works the other way too, we have a 20-foot wide lane for the cars to turn around, and we don't know of any problems at all with the other Big B that we've done, has the drive-up the exact same way. And again, too, you know, people that are familiar with that Big B, we're gonna put it on another building too that we're designing, so. Beyond that, I think we have, that's about it from, at this point, from what we've gotten approved before, so. I'm here with Lauren Hoppin from J&amp;H Family Stores, so you can answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions here for Joe? Is there anything you can put on the overhead, Mr. Wallace, or no? Or all we got are papers in front of us?
Just the plan sets in front of you.
Okay.
Can you comment on, I understand the, not wanting to go behind, but the option of entering the queuing chute right from that service drive?
The one in the back?
There was an option to bring the chute directly in, so that instead of coming in and then having to navigate a left turn to go into the chute, they could come down and go directly into the queuing lane.
Well, that's one of the problems though, for bringing cars in through this driveway here?
No, no. They would come in this way and go directly into the queuing chute.
I understand, but if cars came in, which a lot of them will come in that north side, then they would have to go back out to the access drive to begin, to get back in them, to get back.
Okay. All right, so that, so that's, so that's the reason. All right.
Are the fire hydrants mentioned by the fire department shown on this plan?
Um, no, I don't think they're on that plan.
Fire hydrant was to be placed right near where the west property line is extended down to that primary south access drive in that particular area. And that's why the fire department needed the 20 feet coming through that, that access point, 'cause they thought that if they do fight a fire, they'll probably be staging the truck right in the throat of that access drive, which is why they felt it was so important to have the 20 feet.
Any other questions for Joe before he leaves seat?
Where are the fire hydrants located?
On the, on the old...
Are they on the plan here, or should they be on the plan?
There'll be, there'll be one. Uh, let's see, there'll be one in this area right here, where the back service drive comes out to the main access, southern access drive, and then there'll be one further out towards the Terry D Boulevard. Those'll be the two locations for the fire hydrants. So that one hydrant will be very close to where they'd be staging the truck if, if they needed to fight a fire at this facility.
I see the 16-inch water main, but I don't see the location of the hydrant.
Yeah, those locations would have been approved, and to my knowledge, they're not proposing to change anything over what you approved before, that they would stay at the same location. And I think the approval required the fire department and Jeff Dietland to approve final locations when they place those hydrants. So, but roughly that's where they will be.
That was on the first plan, Bob, that they had them.
Yeah, the first site plan.
Repeat that.
On the first plan they gave us, the hydrants were on.
Were on.
Yes, sir.
And they haven't changed.
And so, they're still gonna be in the same location as they were presented and approved. Okay, if nobody has anything for Joe, I can have Joe sit down, sort of him hanging in space in a second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
So no changes have to be made, so as per what staff is outlining for?
Per the staff's recommendation, the original one.
Well, it's on hydrants, but yeah.
Excuse me?
The hydrants part, when you say as per the original one, I'm...
No, I mean, he gave us two options tonight.
Two options, yeah.
There's one that was presented to us, and then he told us about the second one. I'm making a motion to approve it with the circle drive.
Okay.
The way that it's set up here in the picture.
Right.
Okay.
I hadn't heard the reason, now hearing the reason, it makes more sense that they're trying to avoid the confusion of sending somebody back out and back in.
Right, again.
If they knew exactly where they're going, there wouldn't be an issue, but...
Right.
You can't count on that happening.
No way.
Right.
Okay. So do we have a second to the motion? Presented? Do you have any questions, any problems with it?
No. I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Fent.
Yes.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Smith. Filkins.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Van Luntie. Champlin.
Yes.
Gregg.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Give you a second to leave, we just got a couple more things to hash around.
Just so you know, if I've been on Subway. (laughing). I was thinking of you when we came back today.
Oh yeah, yeah.
I was thinking of you when we opened.
Thanks. Okay. Some discussion on zoning ordinance related to locations for crematoriums. Okay.
Yeah, the city has received an application, and I've written a memo, it should be in your packet, for a crematorium to be located in a OS2 zoning district. It's either in or near the downtown, I'm not sure exactly, but it's pretty close to the DDA district line. The issue that we have is that the zoning ordinance is totally silent on the crematorium use. It's not identified in any zoning district as permitted by right, nor is it identified in any zoning district as a use that could be considered by a special use permit. And, you know, in looking at how such a use is treated in other communities, it's handled in a variety of different ways. I think in some communities, it's permitted by right, under certain design standards, other times it's allowable in certain districts through a special use permit. And the only reason you would have a special use permit is, again, just a concerted effort to perhaps look at some of the specific design standards. I don't know if there's a perfect way to do it, I think either way it could be acceptable. But we didn't want to make the leap, a lot of times, if a use is very similar to another use, you can accept that to be considered by the planning commission because they're so similar, but this was a use that, you know, we haven't had to date and didn't seem to be similar to the uses identified by special use permit or, or by right. And for that reason, wanted to start a discussion as to your thoughts on how you might want to deal with such a use in terms of adding it either by, as a by right use or permitted by a special use permit use. And of course, it would take a little bit of time to even kinda pull some, some strategies together of how it's dealt with other places. I, I've already invested maybe two, three hours' time on this and have, in my limited research, have found there's not a standard way that a crematorium is treated in zoning. They're permitted, sometimes they're permitted in commercial districts, other times in industrial districts. Many times they'll have a spatial separation from residential dwellings of anywhere to, say, 300 to 700 feet linear distance, and again, I don't always know the reasons why all these standards are, are put in place, but that's part of the process to take a hard, hard look at that. And there, and because it's kind of a use where a lot of communities struggle with how to deal with it, and there's a lot of information on both sides, people who support it, people who don't wanna see such a use, you have to sort through the information that's correct or incorrect, or just being thrown out there for emotional reasons. Seems to be conflicting information on whether, from a air quality standpoint, that it either has impact or doesn't have impact. And you can go to articles and you'll see some that say there is no impact, and then other people will say there is an impact, so it's kind of a complicated issue. And I just thought, since, and there is a need, the statistics are that within another few years, that perhaps 50% of people will choose the option to be cremated over a normal burial. And so, it's not a, gonna be a rare use of something that isn't gonna be typical in a community. And so, it is a, gonna, going to be a routine, needed use. It would be appropriate that we set the standards for how we would consider requests for that land use. And so I just wanted to get it out there on the table, get some initial thoughts. Obviously, we can't just, probably just say we should do it this way. I mean, I think the first step is just to back up and try to start to assemble data on, on things that we should consider, just to make sure that we're protecting the health, safety, and welfare of residents of the community. But I wanted to at least get it on the table, and I'm, I'm suggesting in my memo that you appoint a subcommittee of three or four members that would work with me to assemble the, the data that I think we need to make a wise choice with how to address the issue, and that myself, working with this subcommittee, could come back to the full planning commission with recommendations that could be considered by the full board, full commission.
Okay. What is it they're doing currently? 'Cause, or where is it located now that they're using a crematorium? I mean, I know people are getting cremated, I don't know where they're at, but...
I know there's...
Not within the city.
I mean...
Facilities over in Man...
Facilities over in Manastee and Luddington, I believe. I know they're the only ones I know of.
There are a couple of them locally, but not in the city.
Not in the city.
Not even close to the city.
Oh. Okay. 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 Not to pick on any of the retirees for this board, but I'm gonna.
It doesn't have to be three or four, I mean, if you only can get two, that's fine too. I just, I just wanted other members to be looking and sifting through the data along with me to have some dialoguing back and forth, just so that when we bring it back, it's from a multiple perspective.
And I guess I have to agree with you, yeah, in the future, there's probably going to be more and more and more of that need, so I do agree with that. Anyway, all right, any thoughts, anybody wanting to jump in?
I have a thought, I think this is one thing that there'll be a certain amount of concern and maybe opposition to having it anywhere, but after it's in place, nobody will pay any attention. I mean, it's a very quiet, you know, subdued, it doesn't attract a lot of attention to itself, and it's just like going by the graveyard on, you know, on 131 coming into town.
Yeah, it's an issue that, people find it easy to land on one side or other of the issue, and that's what's challenging about it. But it's, it's not unlike any other potentially uses that people would be on different sides of the fence about, you know, such as adult uses. Land use law says, any, you know, reasonable legal use, you aren't open to just saying, "No, we just don't want any of that in our, in our city."
Yeah.
And now, you can, you can restrict it, you can regulate it, you can do a lot of things, you just can't say, "Well, we're not going to do it." So, in that regard, that's why it's important to find the proper strategy or way to deal with it.
I think it would be wise to have a committee that would study this and maybe make recommendations, and I think that would, at least when objections do come into the city office here, that we oppose this, so we've done a thorough study and we feel this is legitimate, you know, use of whatever land, whatever zone it's in. I think it's just, the fact that we've made an intentional study of it, I think will speak, you know, clearly.
Part of me thinks the equipment that they would have in place has got to take care of...
Yeah.
Older, I would think, if any, if there is, don't know, haven't hung out by one of those places necessarily, but I would think today's equipment should be designed to, anyway, but...
I'm sure it is, yeah.
But, so it sounds like, Joe, you might be interested in being on that committee, though.
Well, like someone said, there's, you know, age is kind of creeping up and I might be a part of this.
(laughing) We ain't asking you to volunteer to use it yet. Not asking.
Well, I'm not rushing, I've got some grandpa work to do.
Okay, good, we're not rushing either, but, okay.
It's also got to meet state requirements for air quality and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
If you think about it, do you guys smell the boat plant and all the fiberglass they use in all the paints? Because the stacks are high enough, it puts it up to a certain area and you just don't smell it, so. I'm not sure, again, there's smell, but there's going to be certain states or whatever mandates that are going to call out for the air quality.
Mm-hmm.
So you're just looking for a location.
I get lots of smells from the north, I'm by the last farm in town.
Come down the hall when you drive through town and all the farms.
So, yeah. Okay, is anybody interested in trying to help Mr. Wallace present or research this for us? And I know he'll supply pizza and stuff.
I wouldn't object to it if, you know, you think I'd... In fact, I feel it's really necessary to, you know, pursue this in, you know, an appropriate way and go forward and make recommendations.
Okay. Anybody else interested with Mr. Shikto?
I will, too.
Dave will, okay. And Mr. Greg and Mr. Shikto.
John, have you contacted the DEQ about what...
That's, that's going to be part of the research process, is contacting anybody involved that has served in some capacity to regulate this type of use and find out what the standards are. So we'd be doing that and we'd be looking up what's done in other communities and why, and try to figure out the rationale, and try to figure out if there's any rhyme or reason behind spatial separations, or is that just something to make people feel good? We just need to look at, find the real answers behind all those questions.
What district is the one proposed in?
OS2, Office Service.
Which takes in a fair amount of...
Looks like downtown.
So...
This committee could be composed in part of people, not necessarily on the planning commission, I presume.
Right, I mean, we're going to, we're going to touch base with a lot of different folks, but the people kind of looking at the data and sifting through the data will all be looking at the same thing, so that when we come back, we can all share that information from our own viewpoints and have a more comprehensive feedback back to the full, full commission. I just wanted other people to be reviewing all the same things that I'm looking at, or direct me to go find specific things that they think we need to find out, so that it's just not one person driving it.
So they would get their direction, so to say, from you, so they could come down during the day, yes, or...
Yeah, I'll start recommending places I think we need to go and things we need to collect, and the members would be free to layer on top of that, you know, as they, as they see fit. And I can be doing all the legwork, I just need the input to know what to assemble and what everybody wants to look at.
And I would imagine at a point, this would become a public hearing, at a point.
Yeah, when we get to a point where we feel comfortable...
Or at least there, but yeah.
Where we feel comfortable that we want to make a decision and identify where these uses would be appropriate, the obvious use would be appropriate, it would be a text amendment to the zoning ordinance and would require a public hearing.
Okay. God, I'm sure if Mr. Smith was here, he'd be on board, because he's got time to. Okay, well, we're good with a couple. You need anything else?
No, I...
At this time?
No, I think that's what I needed, just to move forward, we'll probably convene a meeting, I'll put a first round of information together, and, I mean, I'm sure it'll be evolving, but just to get everybody's viewpoint and share the starting point of information that we have available. And certainly, the applicant would feel free to submit whatever information that they have in their possession, that would be extremely helpful as well.
Agreed. So at this stage, I don't really have to get any input from audience or who's ever here to represent us exactly at this time?
Uh, not required to, if you wanted to hear from the applicant, you know, there's a public comment period anyway, so...
That's true, I'll be hitting that in a second, so...
All right.
What the...
Does anybody possibly have questions about this yet, or get it during the public comment part, or no? Or it doesn't matter?
OS2 basically is what, downtown?
Yeah. Well, it's possibly parts of downtown and downtown fringe.
Corridors and stuff are that? What does POS mean?
Open space, parts and open space.
Oh, right, I should have looked, right there.
Yeah.
Okay. Want additional info now, or ask the gentleman to give some comments on public comments?
Kind of, nobody knows what it is, so it'd be nice to find out what's going on.
Do you have some input?
Well, um...
I don't know, putting you on the spot a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how to propose this. What we feel is, clearly, there's a need, everybody agrees with that, and we feel that the ordinance, there's never been an ordinance written that couldn't be improved in some manner, and, but we feel that the ordinance as it's written now has some room to allow for you to determine affirmatively the application for a special use permit. What we are definitely going to have to consider are the conditions that are going to be attached, and I see the exercise that's been discussed here tonight is really important to that. What I would be concerned about is a full-out zoning amendment, textual amendment, when I believe that based on the ordinance as it's written now, there's room for this as a special use, there's room for it in this district, and we are frankly prepared to address all the conditions that you've raised. You know, this is a permitted kind of issue, there, the business is actually quite regulated itself by state statute. I can assure you that the product itself, the equipment itself, is not your grandfather's crematorium, this is like super sophisticated kind of equipment that, as I understand it, I'm not the engineer, but as I understand it, there's little if any emissions whatsoever. So, you know, that doesn't change the fact that we are definitely going to have to face the conditions issue, and I think that what, you know, the kind of substantive issues that you're talking about tonight will have to be raised at one point or another, but we would like them to be, you know, reviewed sooner rather than later, so we can proceed on this application.
Your name, please, I'm sorry, I should have had you...
I'm sorry, my name is Mike Filialmeni, I'm an attorney with McCurdy-Wattila in Porteous in Town.
Thank you, Mike.
You mentioned regulations, does each state have their own, it's a state regulation, it's not a national or federal regulation?
Um, you know, there's such an overlap between the emissions, and Dave could probably talk to this as well as I can, between the federal standards and the state standards, DEQ for sure is the department that will be regulating this, whether they're applying state or federal emissions kind of standards, I can't tell you, but, but there's also a very interesting, and this goes under the category of you learn something new every day, even as old as I am, there's a really interesting sort of arcane set of statutory and regulatory, you know, rules that apply to crematoriums and mortuaries and the combination of crematoriums and mortuaries, and again, all of that will be addressed.
Like a crematorium would have a license to do such, you know, business?
Yeah, and who can own what is regulated, and crematoriums are regulated in the same statute as cemeteries, and it's really pretty complicated and pretty, and I'm not sure that I understand it totally, frankly, but there are regulations and rules in the statute that's been around a long time that haven't really sort of progressed with the industry. But that's an editorial comment.
Okay.
And we definitely would be available and have the engineer available to provide any information that might be helpful with regard to the actual equipment that are used nowadays.
Yeah, that, that would be extremely helpful.
Right. I'm thinking in today's world, right, it should be pretty state-of-the-art stuff.
Based on the price tags that I've seen, it better be.
Right, okay, yeah. Any other questions for Mike, or we move on? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. You good, sir?
Yeah, just the initial, the applications come in twice, we had an opportunity to sit down, Mike Holmeier, the city attorney, and myself, with Mr. Filialmeni, and talk through our determination that we didn't think the ordinance provided for it. He's now, since submitted a second application, it should be almost near its completion of a second review. I haven't heard any feedback, but I imagine when we get a final review letter from the attorney, they'll either reaffirm the first decision that the ordinance doesn't allow it to come to the planning commission, or if there's a change, then that might change something with respect to their app, but it still doesn't change things that we have to move forward, moving forward and set a course that we're very confident in, so the future applications would fall within a very specific process that everybody felt comfortable with and met the test of public scrutiny. So either way, I think it's something we have to move forward on.
So we're not necessarily getting the cart before the horse, because we haven't heard back from the attorneys?
No, because I somewhat expect a similar response to the first review, but I don't want to say that's a definite, but even if it, even if there was a change, the fact that, I usually feel comfortable when there's another use that's largely similar, like, say you have by a special use permit, a pawn shop, and then somebody chose to come in and submit for secondhand goods shop. Well, maybe they didn't think it was a pawn shop, but it's essentially almost running the same kind of business. I feel a lot more comfortable when we let those extremely similar uses in under riding on the coattails of unidentified use, and I just don't see that here, which is, makes me a little bit nervous about seeing a lot of public scrutiny and why would we would make such a big leap from what's listed to what's being proposed, and that's kind of my, my position on it, and at some point, Mike can speak for his position, but he's also identified some potential conflicts with other state laws, which I'm not well-versed on enough right now to relay that information to you, but I assume that we'll have Mike address the commission at one of the upcoming meetings.
Okay. Everybody good on this subject for now? Okay, and thank you, David, and thank you, Joe. Okay. You guys should have seen a David Van Lente registration, resignation, sorry, from the planning commission due to his new job, that was in everyone's packet as well. So, I don't know if I have to expand on that at all. I do see it looks like he possibly recommended his wife, Joanne, but I think council tonight picks or determines that. Do we have to do anything else with that?
Just a motion to accept his resignation. If you want to direct any recognition to go out to Mr. Van Lente, you could add that to it as well, but just so that we're officially recognizing the, you know, the resignation, I think that's important. And it also lets us then move on for the replacement. And I think we talked a little bit about, was it a good idea to trim the board back or keep it wherever it was? And I think we were talking, we were worried a little bit about meeting quorum if we trimmed it back, so I think we're probably going to work on trying to find a replacement.
Agreed. For the snowbirds and stuff. That's good. Right. Okay. Okay. So, entertain a motion here to recognize Mr. Van Lente's resignation, I guess?
I'll second it.
Who first did? I was just reading...
You're gonna make the motion.
I'm about, again, okay, I'll, I'll make the motion that we will recognize Mr. Van Lente's resignation. And this, I guess, he recommended his wife, she's in the right district, but we'll let council determine that, if that's whatever. And then seconded by Mr. Champlin. Okay?
Okay. Schickto?
Yes.
Fant?
Yes.
Smith?
Philkins?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Van Lente? Champlin?
Yes.
Gregg?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. Any board member comments this evening?
What's the four posts in the alley over there?
It's where the trash compactor is going to be?
That's the support structure for the walls for the dumpsters. We're moving to larger centralized garbage containers for all the businesses, so that you don't see all the garbage containers strung out along the entire alleyway. They're all gonna be putting their garbage in central containers at either end of the parking lot.
How close is that to be done, John? A few more weeks, or...
Uh, I think we're looking at about roughly two to three weeks.
Looks good. I like it.
Thank you. It's, it's been a challenge keeping up with it.
I'm sure.
Just little things. I guess the biggest, there hasn't been a lot of serious problems. It's just, we had a little bit of delay with the major utility companies. Their workload necessitated, we lost, I think, maybe two weeks in that utility bearing process. And then the only other real problem we've had is the period of time that the ordering of materials is out from these producers of the equipment going into the project. The light poles, they were ordered from the day one of the contract, and yet they'll be the very last thing installed. And some of the housing for the fountain heads for the, for the splash pad, they were not able to get 100% of those right when they needed them, so we're seeing another short delay there. But it's just been material supply issues that have slightly delayed it, but they're pushing it as hard as they can.
By making shape, yes. Good.
I think they set up, setting up for the bases for the big arts, where the sign between City Park and the plaza will be going. And I don't know if you've seen the pictures, but it's a pretty striking metal arch that will go on those pillars and kind of announce, you know, walking from one facility to the other, so it'd be a really nice feature.
I'm not sure if my comments should be directed to Mr. Goldner or here, but I always do like the, the added law enforcement during the summer. In the past, they have always come down to, at least us on, on Main Street, introduce themselves. It's a nice touch. This year, I'm not seeing none of that. I find it helpful personally, because I'm, when I see these guys out and about, that I can say hi. This year, again, I don't know if I should address it to Mr. Goldner on this, that they're not doing that. I get little stickers on my doors, so we've been inspected at whatever hour of the evening, and that's all good. I just did like the little personal touch that they would give. Hey, we're the guys out here, you know, meet you, shake their hand. I thought that was a very nice touch, but I'm not seeing that at all this year. Good. Comment?
We can let them know.
I had a good experience with temporary, I guess, police help. You know, walking around with Kane at City Park, they offered to carry my chairs and help me cross the railroad tracks and...
Thank you.
I mean, I, I felt they may have missed an opportunity for public relations, but I think they did a good job, at least, in my view of point.
I met, I met several of them during the Arts Festival weekend, and they're great guys. Yeah, really great guys. And they, in fact, commented on how honored they are to be able to work in Cadillac this summer, because it's so beautiful here and the people are so nice, that they're really enjoying it.
Okay. Anybody else anything?
It's likely that Linda and I bought a house in Florida, so we're gonna spend some winters down there in the future, so, I mean, I've missed a few meetings, and, I mean, in the future, it's likely Bob's gone and I'm gone, so, I mean, if you've got somebody else that...
That's why we're keeping the number at nine, so we still have a quorum, and we're not, you know, we're not here to say that you can't go do that, encourage it. That's great, that you can.
It's just likely that in the future, I'll miss three, four, or five meetings a year, probably.
Yep.
We're still having a quorum, that was the main concern.
Right, right. To still allow you guys to do that, and we still like you on the board, so we're not trying to get rid of you, no? We didn't try and get rid of Dave, but, yeah, I know Dave was, well, I think, way over a year, but, and we were patient, but he's figuring it out, it's not gonna work, so, yeah.
I'd, I'd just like to comment on Mr. Van Lente, years of wisdom he brought here to the planning commission. I appreciate that, and...
We all did. Right. Agreed. I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay. If anybody, nobody has anything else, no other communications, sir?
No, that's it.
Okay. Any public comment? Chris, anything? We need to know. We're good. Okay. It's always good to have you. And there being no other business, we'll be gone. Thank you.
Thank you.